Thank you. Okay, well, roll call.
Melvin Boyd.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
Gary Long.
Here.
Mike Ryer.
Here.
Phil Fassbender.
Here.
Karen Martin.
Okay, this is the time we have reserved for our open, community open session. I limit you to four minutes at a time and as long as people want to talk. So at this time, just take your name for the record and then you've got four minutes.
My name's Paul Dean. I live across from the Sun Valley Campground. I wondered when this issue of this excessive stormwater coming through off the Sun Valley Campground, this has been an issue for a long, long time. Just to put you up to date. In 2004, I filed a complaint with the township supervisor on Sun Valley Campground on stormwater runoff onto my property causing excessive property damage, going into my garages and making a mess out of it. And 2009, Campground was sold to another company. There still wasn't anything done as far as controlling the stormwater runoff, the excessive that can really be. About 2015, we probably timbered out probably about 800 trees. Now, they had told me that they were going to put basins in and swales and stuff. That never happened. That was another one of their lots. That created more water problem. July 10th, 2017, myself and surrounding residents filed a petition complaint with the township building regards to flooding of Eastern Maple Grove Road and how dangerous was besides my property being damaged. When it really rains, I'll give you some pictures. When it's raining, it's like a river coming down here. This was the last, this rain was on July, July 22nd. Here's my place. And this is what's happening to the road. They threw stones in there to cover this up. This is their one private driveway coming down. It's going underneath the road on both, on the one side where it comes down. This was where my motorhome is. This is my driveway. This was a picture in 2004 with all the stone. They had the forklift out there taking the stones off the road. Here's some extreme pictures of what it looks like when we get heavy rain. It's, it's like a river. My house, my house sits back here. It's, it looked like my house was a, yeah, was a, a household as a boat. And Art, Art saw that already. Art was down when the women owned it before and he volunteered to put catch basins in the top. They refused to let him own the property. Is that right, Art?
Well, they didn't take up the offer.
No, I know. They refused and there's like three, and here's, here's my driveway. I had that washed out probably about half a dozen times. And it, it just keeps getting worse. And now since it took out the trees, it's even worse. I got ahold of PennDOT. I talked to Zach there. He did some of the clean out in the dishes, but he agreed. He says with that excessive water coming down through from Sun Valley Campground, even though they cleaned the dishes out, it's, it's too much. They have to do something. Somebody has to force them to do something to stop a lot of that flow of water coming down. And they're just refusing to do it. Now, they have a new manager there and she came down from Manville. She was a manager for a motel up there.
Okay, wrap it up here. Your time's running.
So anyhow, that's why I brought this here. PennDOT said they can only do that, that the township has to do something to force them to address this, this stormwater problem because it's really dead.
Okay.
Are you aware of that?
I'm aware of the complaint, yes.
Have you, have you looked at any, examined or anything?
No, I haven't been asked to go out and investigate anything at this point in time. They also have not done any improvements on the property that would have changed anything that's pre-existing before.
They extended their campground. The sites they extended mean a year.
Okay, okay, so your time is up.
Yes, they did, I thought.
Okay. Anyone else? You've got four minutes. Is that mine? Okay. That concludes, um, yeah, I've, I've heard this water problem 10 years ago, but I also know that, I remember when that camp, I've been in that campground, the house was across the street. That's been, what, 20 years ago you put the house in?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, so it's a low spot, it's a bad spot to put a house, but you were out there. Is there anything we can, can do or, I mean?
Well, this is, this is just my feeling on it. It is a safety issue when the water comes down the way it does. I don't know if Andy's seen it yet. When it brings the stones down and they're that thick on the road and I would have to go out with a backhoe and scrape the road off? Did you ever?
No, I hasn't gotten that.
I think they're doing it themselves now.
Yeah, I think PennDOT was after the last time.
PennDOT?
Because a neighbor, his wife almost hit head on. A guy came through with the stones, lost control, almost took her down when she was coming out of the driveway. He called PennDOT out. I think he called here and left a message, Souter.
No. Where, that was always a low area where he built these houses, there's no question. But it's the safety part on the road for our residents and drivers who use that. Years ago, I offered to put a swale off the long Hilltop Road and get it into a catch basin. I've learned since, different components across the street from me. I used to get flooded out terrible. I thought I used to, every time it rained, I thought I'd have to buy a boat to get out of my front yard. Once they put that catch basin in over there, I put a 30-inch pipe in there if you remember back, Levi and, you know what? That water is released at such a slow rate. Now, I have a 30-inch pipe and the order never gets higher than that in the bottom of it. That's actually what it takes in this area. I don't know.
Was it, it's their driveway, right? It's coming driveway.
But it starts up at the top end of the campground and then you have areas up there that are packed in with stone. And when the rains come, it takes these stones and brings them down. It, it's a mess. The fix for that thing is still today. Up on Hilltop Road, put a swale along the top, catch that water, put it into a catch basin and release it to, looking at Paul's house, to the left-hand side down the natural swale drainage. It could be fixed, but the campground's going to have to be willing to fix it.
Right. And if you remember, Art, we had met with them a couple of years ago now, I think it was. And if you recall, we see every few months, you see an extension of bond requests from Sun Valley Campground for their land development. That's the plan that actually proposes the expansion for the campground and proposes the stormwater improvements. So that's, that's all part of that plan that is to be coming, but they haven't implemented that at this point. What's the holdup? Why are they asking for extensions? Uh, that could be any number of reasons. Usually it's, it's engineering, perhaps it could be outside agency approvals, it could be any number of things. Project Mammoth, it's voted on hold. Do we have any leverage to deny them an extension and make them address this storm, stormwater across the road? Probably a little question. I don't know if we can compel them to.
Well, but how far, how long is this? We're beyond 90 days, I gather, or are you giving us additional extensions?
No. Yeah, we, the original application was probably from 2015. It was when they originally submitted and as they submitted and they came back in with one revision, I think, maybe early 2016. And then since then, they've been on, they've been asking for 90-day extensions from that point. Not, I don't recall how many they asked for at this point. Well, like you say, Art, it's a problem if there's stones are coming out on the road.
Oh, there's, the stones come out in the road and it layers. And then I noticed somebody in one of them last storms as I went through there, and I go through there pretty often, they scraped them all back off. But, and then in the winter, it can be an awful bad icy spot, you know?
Well, shall we ask Andy and Mike to revisit them and go out there next month and talk to them again?
Well, the only thing with Andy is Andy's not in a position to do, I feel, what I was willing to do. I was willing, if they get me a backhoe, I was going to put the swale in up above and try to do what I could, divert that water and catch some of it at my own time and expense.
Well, I'm thinking more trying to address, make them address the issue that they keep the stones all safe and well.
Well.
And make them, make them come up with a remedy now if something like what you're proposing would help them and they're willing to ask the township to do that, we would address that then, but right now, I guess, I'm just trying to.
Even if they, even if they had a swale up where the pipes come under, Hilltop, and they had a swale that took it to the east and ran it down the, what's a natural contoured flow, would greatly help the amount of water that's coming straight down the driveway to the west.
Is there no break or anything as you go up the driveway? There's a pond on the right there to go in there. Maybe they've ever in that water. But they still have the problems with stones even after the paving that they've done? I mean, they did pave those, those driveways.
Well, I, it looked like stones to me, just right sure.
That never solved the problem.
That's where I'm, I'm thinking. But stoning is usually, I mean, that's, like you said, it is the property owners to handle the stone debris onto the state roadway. However, the runoff itself, I would think would be an issue of maintenance along the drainage way along the state road. So I think you have two things going on there and my only concern, Art, about what you mentioned about diverting, anytime you divert water from one point to another, you have to make sure you're not increasing the water over here onto someone else's property versus taking it from, from somewhere else. So that would just be a, a concern or a possible area that we just want to make sure that if it was pursued. So I know their, their land development plan actually proposed that and that was one of the issues they had. They were actually increasing it on someone else's property versus removing it.
Or does he put in a swale up above and put, caught it into a catch basin?
Right.
They could release that at a slower rate.
Depending where they're releasing and how much they're releasing.
Yeah.
Why all the fronting from where the campground is all the way down Oak Creek? There's no other property involved, mine is the one that's involved in.
But, but where the water would be diverted, the easiest place and the most feasible would be between you and the lot next is the.
Souter.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it should go.
Is there a swale there?
There's a swale.
Okay, okay.
If that dish is filled up and shoved through camp.
But that's east, that's east.
I had a guy come in with a backhoe to dig that dish out of there.
Well, I, I, I think that, you know, we're, we're kind of speaking the dark here, but because we can't actually see what we're talking about. You don't think maybe we have Andy and Mike go out and look at it?
Well, that's fine. Talk to them.
Make sure they understand that there, it's not going to be acceptable for their stone to be coming down on the road. Yeah, that I'm sure we can definitely talk about. And then however they run it back, you know, would be on, on that to take care of it. And if it happens, they would, they'll be responsible for it.
But when the water is trying to.
And we, we can talk to them, however, I'm not sure we can compel them to do anything again because a lot of that is contributing watershed that's coming off of that hill from even above Sun Valley Campground. It's a natural low area where the water goes. Can't get water to go uphill.
If there was something, you know, some activity, construction or, you know, previous service that was added that they have performed that would, you know, adversely impact that hill, then you might be able to do something. Just tell them that's the case. I don't know what Mike was saying.
I think, just stop, do a site inspection. Okay. We'll, we'll go next month. Andy and we'll go from there. Okay, we'll move on to our guests tonight. We have a couple people on the agenda to speak. I guess we have Hershey surveying first. Paul, those are your guests.
Good evening. Ron Hershey with Hershey surveying. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about two things. Number one is the DePew five Greenway, Greensway, which is the top of Fairway Drive. We have requested a waiver of section 98 dash 21A2 and 9827 as it relates to lot add-on, lot consolidation plan. You may have some things in your folder there. I will just lay a few things out for you as well, just for reference, you don't have to flip through all the stuff. So the DePews own a lot up on the top of Greensway. They actually own two lots that were a part of the subdivision created as part of, I guess it's Hawk Valley East back in 86. There'd be lots 21 and 22 on Greensway.
Which ones are these?
Well, this is 22 and this is 21.
So 21 has the building on and 22 is vacant.
Correct. 22 is vacant, yeah. So when the lots were originally purchased by, I believe, the Wells, house was built. Shortly after the house was built, they realized, hey, wait a minute, we've got a little problem here. We've got a driveway that might be over the property line. There was another lot within development where they had an issue. There were two or three lots, I think, that were involved in a small add-on situation because of some lot lines being more respective. So they did, they processed an add-on, they added about 4,400 square feet to the one side to rectify that situation. And for whatever reason, apparently after the house was built, they realized, hey, we have another issue. Well, let's sell you that lot too, which was lot 22, the downhill side. So they own two lots. That lot is really steep. That house really sits up.
Is that really a lot of record?
It is actually.
So it's actually available a lot?
That's kind of what we're trying to resolve here at this point. It is according to tax assessment, it is a separate lot. According to everything, it's a separate lot. They've owned them since the home was built back in the eighties. However, as you can see by graphical representation, I believe the house is probably approaching a setback on the other side and that may have been why they call it those lots. They have no intention of doing anything with that lot. It's quite steep. I don't know that you'd be able to put much of a house on it if you could. They have no intention to. So they'd like to join them together. The problem is that the ordinance that was adopted by the township has what's called a lot add-on and lot consolidation ordinance, section of the ordinance that would join those together. You need to go through those processes to join these lots together. Now, in some municipalities and, and through the assessment office in the county, they would recognize a lot consolidation merely by deed. In other words, tract A, tract B, to be joined in common, amen, at the end of the deed. And it joins it together, recognizes it as one lot, tax assessment then, reassess, rechanges the parcel number, gives it one parcel number, its intents and purposes, it's all one lot without going through the formal plan process. So we're coming to you tonight to request a waiver of that section from the ordinance to allow us to record a deed, join these two lots in common by virtue of omitting the process of going through the plan procedure as outlined in the ordinance. So that's, that's what we're here for, to make a special waiver for this section.
And the planning commission has recognized it.
That's true.
And this is a process, and I, Ron and I have talked about this. There are many other municipalities, primarily in Berks and Chester County, where I worked, a similar situation would not have to even go through the process of a plan submission. Lancaster, when they re-adopted the model, old Saldo, if you remember, and followed that guidance. So that's the trigger behind any, any type of project like this would also have to provide a plan in addition to the deed, whereas you may be able to just do a deed in other places, so.
And typically, this is, this is rarely done, this is deed.
Yeah, I agree.
Third one that I've done in 25 years, two of which were done, well, this is proof that I, the second one was done by joining two deeds together. The other one, I actually had to go through the plan process, but in, in the model, and it was another township that had adopted the model ordinance as well, and that's what they recognized and so that's a honor, we're listed for that.
So you need a waiver of the lot consolidation plan.
That's right. Section, yep, section 98, 21A2 and 9827.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to grant them the waiver for the per section 98, 21A2 and 98 dash 27. Is there a second?
I second it.
The motion is made in second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we will, we will notify the township by writing up here, the E S is recorded, right in the way. Just clarification of the circle path on that. Love your motion.
Do you have a second issue?
The second issue is a, a plan that we had, give me a second, I'll put this away and get my other hat on. Come on, I've got information. I'll provide you with some information. This is not on your list of agenda items there.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, it's not on your guest list, is, is it, that I understand there. If your guest list isn't spelled out, I don't know. Give you a few pieces of information here, if I may. Oh, good. I might have to share off some of these. All right, I'll use, uh, maybe I'll use that as a reference if I can. I'll be able to. All right. So the property that we're dealing with is, property is owned by RJS, what's the name of the?
RJS Investments.
Thank you, thank you. For those of you who are.
RJS Investments.
That's correct. For those of you who are not familiar with exactly what that corporation entails, the house that burned down right across from Sodder's garage, eight months ago, nine months ago, something like that, is located right here. My finger is, it's on the corner there, Boamontville Road. Well, we had, we had proposed a, a prop, improvements on that property as they've reassessed what they're going to do with it after the home had burnt down. And I'm just going to give you a copy of, and take a look at that plan so you can see what they're looking to do. We proposed this to the zoning hearing board. We, I don't know what that is.
You can cover it.
Okay.
Okay.
Out of my way.
You may replace it. Okay.
I'll put it back. Okay. What we had proposed based on what was there, what we're looking at doing was four, two four-unit apartment buildings, very similar to what Mr. Brank has, has built over the past few years down below there on Maple Grove Road. However, his units were top-of-all units. These are going to be one unit per dwelling, I think, so four units, not stacked, all single floor, or two stories, but single units. So we're looking through the ordinance and it's permitted within a, what's called a residential medium district. This is residential low. So we started looking at the surrounding properties and we thought, well, you know what? The home park that's permitted in medium, the homes that are up along the northern side or the southern side of Boamontville Road are all, about a third of an acre, which would again be non-conforming in the low district. The use and the uses that are in that area seem very similar to the medium district. We went for the zoning hearing board requesting a use variance to allow for this particular use on this property based on the surrounding environment and what was there and what was already being, being used as a medium district criteria. They gone through some discussion, said we're not going to make that use variance call because we feel that's a supervisor's call. They said Mike want to consider application for rezoning. So as we kind of went through the process and started looking at it a little bit, you know, one of the reasons we didn't was because of the, it's not really exactly contiguous to a, to a medium district. It would be a lot across the turnpike, but, you know, we kind of hit that around a little bit and said, hmm, you know, that, that may be something that I'm not sure how it would go over. So we're kind of here tonight to kind of look at you guys as some direction as to how you may look in favor of or if you may be interested in or if, if, you know, if it's something that you may consider. In the meantime, as we look through it, we look through some of the.
The house that burned down. I'm just trying to get my bearings.
Okay.
This is the house that burned down.
This is, this is the Sodder property right here.
And the fire.
Yep, that's right. Yep.
And their garage is right here.
And the garage is across the street. This is owned, this is owned industrial now, I think it is, the gray area?
Yeah.
The industrial?
Light industry.
Light industry.
So this tract.
Yeah, this tract is light industry. This, this, this is light industrial as well over here.
And they own that?
No, they don't own that. This is, this is, this is a different property altogether over here. This is, this is what we're talking about, right?
The trade park.
That's it. And the mobile home park and these are the little lots that I was talking about on the top on the side. So as we look through, we look through some of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan looks at this property as, as potential commercial property. These properties are essentially all developed to their fullest at this point. I don't see anybody going in with bulldozers or kind of cleaning this late. What we're looking to do is, is get this ball rolling, I guess, to kind of move it into a, bring the lots into compliance, one thing. That would allow us to do what we're proposing as well through the, through the zoning ordinance and through the Saldo.
How is the trailer, how is the trailer court sealed?
Residential low.
So it's not in compliance?
It's non-conforming. That's been there since the seventies. It's been there for quite a while. Sixties, we had, we had, we had some discussion about a zoning and nobody could remember, but they always remember being there and not many of us were around in the sixties.
He was.
Or at least knowledgeable in the sixties to know what we're talking about. The, the, this lot here on the corner is actually not an independent lot. It's actually part of the tract across the street as well. That's, that's all part of the same tract. They just have open, have a known both sides of the street. That's an undeveloped lot. That one, that one has some trees on it, some trees on it, so. But again, so we're looking at, at comprehensive plan and looking at some of the things. This is, this is slated in the urban growth, the urban village growth area. It's also slated as, you know, potential commercial properties for, you know, future rezoning. That would take it down a few pegs on the zoning list or up a few pegs depending on how you look at it. Again, we're merely looking at possibly doing a, going down from residential medium to a residential, or residential low to a residential medium to bring them into compliance with exactly what's there. The minimum lot size in a residential low is 20,000 square feet. These lots up here, if they're an acre, 1,600, 1,600 square feet or 16,000 square feet, so they would be non-compliant lots.
Is, is there two lots here?
No, there's, there's one lot here, one lot here, and that's about an acre. And then this is part of the farm across the street. It's not a separate lot.
Is that?
But if it were zoned differently and they wanted to do some development on there that would be in line with this new zoning, they could subdivide it. If they wanted to subdivide it as it stood now, they could still subdivide that at some point in time. Currently, it's assessed and it's part of the lot across the street over here.
So it's not a, is it a separate deed?
No, sir.
But it is a separate zone. It's, it's a. It's a residential medium currently, and across the road is-
Low, currently.
Currently low. Across the street.
This is our, this is residential low also?
Correct. And across the street is the-
Industrial, light industrial.
Right?
Well, no, Ag.
The gray?
Is that, no, is that part of-
This is the current zoning, this is the pink.
Yeah, but is that part of this property?
This pink property right here, yep.
Okay, and that's a highway commercial.
Highway commercial.
Across the street.
This is highway commercial here. This is the pink area right here.
Well, it seems like what the proposal is affixed to, again, straighten out some of our zoning issues, where we have property that is not zoned for what's currently being used for. If we would have stuck to principles of that over the years, 20 years ago, we would have made sure properties that were being used were zoned for what they were used for, we wouldn't have a whole valley problem. But, so, and also the fact that someone, he could be asking us today to rezone this to highway commercial, because apparently on our NICO Regional Comprehensive Plan, the township at one time thought that land was to be developed into commercial use. This would deter that, we would eliminate it from our future land, not as future highway commercial.
And I would argue the case that commercial probably would be of best use for that. It's been awful.
No, it's to develop.
And it is developed, it's not, land would be used for a commercial.
So I think, my suggestion is, we would ask the planning commission to review this, and ask them to conduct a public hearing on it, and then give us the recommendation from them.
Well, there would not be a public hearing at this point in time, and what you could do, you could have a petition submitted by the landowners to rezone.
No, I'm asking the planning commission to take a look at it.
And have them initiate it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then they could go ahead and do their public hearing, and get feedback from the community before they, before they would get back to us. Okay, I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion to defer this to the planning commission, and ask them to evaluate it, and conduct a public hearing, and get feedback, and then take that to make a back to the board. Then, is there a second?
I second it.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I have one more thing.
Ah, shit.
Get out of here. Okay, you have your great valley consultant.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Jones from Great Valley Consultants. Here to present the John Zimmerman property along Reading Road. Mr. Zimmerman, Zimmerman is proposing to build two turkey barns on the rear of his property. It's an unusually shaped property, you might consider it a flag lot, there's only one driveway that goes out on the Reading Road.
Which was behind the archery shop.
This is the entire property, and the driveway is here on Reading Road. That's the only road, the only road frontage that the property has.
That's next to the big farm.
Very large property.
That is the big farm. This is the big farm.
Well, it is the big farm next to it. That's what I thought, it's not the big farm.
They both are big farms.
The one you're thinking about is the, is the one up in this area.
Okay.
There's just-
The proposed turkey barns are up in this area. See on this plan, this corner of the property. It's supposed turkey barns are, or something similar, they're rather large, 63 by 700 feet.
700.
700.
The one out on Silver Hill Road is, is that 700?
Close.
Six, it's just shot at, okay. Very similar size.
But that's, what's proposed, the planning commission has seen it, and has granted a conditional final approval. We have applied a PNDOT for a permit for the driveway, even though it was an existing driveway, the planning commission wanted us to go through the permitting process to get it permitted, which it probably never was. PNDOT is requiring some improvements at the driveway. There'll be a small area that's actually paved, and widened a bit. We had to get some easements from the property owners to make, fit in the radio, that's been done, easements have been obtained. So we expect that PNDOT approval will be forthcoming. But, for, we know that's the only thing that's still-
Yeah, and just to add to that, that was the major issue when they first came in, I think it was back, several months ago, back in March, I think it was the first submission. They did go back through the PNDOT process, there are a couple of minor issues, I know Levi had written a letter regarding the distance of the driveway to the side lot line. The site distance is okay, but we, because of the change in use going from just an agricultural farm, down to an intensive ag use, required modification and getting a permit, so. Planning Commission did have recommendations on the conditional plan approval, as well as some waivers. Those waivers were for road shoulder improvements along Route 625 and Pleasant Valley Road. They are offering the alternate right of way for that, for both of those roads. The waiver request to go right to a final plan, recommendation of a waiver partial, showing all existing features within 200 feet of the tract, recommendation of approval of the submission of a traffic impact study. Reason for that is because of the number of trips that are actually being made to the property for the turkey barn use. Very similar to the one on Silver Hill Road, so I'll keep using that as comparison, very similar type use. There was also a recommendation to waive trails. There is an easement that's being provided from the owner along the repairing quarter along Creek, that in the event the township would want to get an easement for a trail of some sort, there is an offer on there, a letter on the plan, that we could exercise that at later date, if there was a desire to do so.
I was wondering if we couldn't go back to the original easement on the stream, for the paved trails from Five Pointville to Bowman's Road. If we couldn't go back to the original, before it was changed by a small group of people there a few years back, you know, there's easement all along that stream. You know? So, see what they say about that, that easement. We have the old maps, I'm sure, here at the township, but-
You're saying beyond this property, or, are you saying beyond this property?
Well, there was easement along this stream, through those two farms.
I think there was one letter of, what, the states maybe was referring to.
And they changed the walking trails for the safety of the public from along the streams, to, out onto, good road, down Maple Grove Road to the power. I don't know, I guess we still have the old maps, Greg. Yeah. So this property borders the stream on the south.
The stream runs through, along with 100-year floodplain.
Okay.
Yeah, interesting sight. So that's why, the planning commission had a similar comment that Arthur just made, figuring the best way to handle it, because we don't know exactly where the trail may go, just an offer on, a letter on the plan, would give us, the township the right to go on, and at a later date, if we wanted to construct a trail, we'd have the right through this property to do so.
Is that covering your concern?
It's just a matter of where it goes beyond, beyond the property.
Okay.
And, and we put all these in one motion?
I would, I would think you could.
Well, what, basically, your big issue is a waiver on the driveway, because it's so small, you can't, right?
No, there's no waiver of the driveway.
There is not.
No, that, the only condition, that lends itself to the conditional, if you would make action on the conditional final plan approval, just by referencing my review letter, which contains the comment about having a PNDOT H O P.
Right, right. But you're asking the waiver request from the road shoulder widening along, yeah, along Route 625 and Pleasant Valley Road, so are they gonna, us, is this gonna continue over through to Pleasant Valley Road?
Well, the only reason that comment's on there is because they have furniture, they have a small piece of furniture on Pleasant Valley. So by ordinance, they would actually have to widen Pleasant Valley just for this stretch, and just widen 625 along that stretch.
And no improvements proposed.
Right, and the planning commission didn't feel that was necessary, given what the scope here is.
Never use it.
Provided they get the H O P for the driveway, that's sort of the focus.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're looking for the six items listed on your letter on August 29th?
Yeah, that would be, and I, my suggestion would be to do two motions, one would be for one through five for the waiver requests, and then item six would be the conditional final plan approval.
That's fine. Don't use that one.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion, we approve the waiver request from 95-18, D2 for road shoulder widening, recommend, recommend approval waiver request from 98-19, we're right, proceed directly to the final plan, not preliminary approval. Recommendation, recommendation of approval waiver request from 98-25, B2E for showing all existing features. Recommendation of a waiver request for 98-37, of the submission of a traffic study, and recommendation of approval of waiver requests for providing trails on the property.
Yeah, that was the motion, is there a second? Second it. Okay, we had the motion on a second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
And then I make a recommendation for a condition, conditional preliminary fin, final plan approval. Continued on, after satisfying all of your comments outlining the township's areas where you have updated, August 29th.
Okay, we had a motion, is there a second? I second it. Okay, the motion is made a second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Very good, thank you very much.
Now, you, you have, um, construction cost estimate.
Yes, I will, we can do those now if you'd like, I do have-
No, that's fine, we'll have a report.
Do the report.
Yeah, before we go. Sir?
Yes?
How structurally sound is that bridge for big trucks?
I can't answer that tonight.
Because, some of the last times I was in there, depends, that, did you see the bridge? Did you know where it's on, they did the hogs? Okay. And that bridge, I don't know, was never built for heavy stuff, so, something that ought to be looked at.
Is it in order to the property? Excuse me? That would be in order to the property, that's not outside in the-
No, it's behind all 625, probably, yeah, but probably 150 yards.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm not so sure.
I will.
That bridge was built for a valley. Only for their own benefit, to make sure.
I would think so.
And then when you get into redoing a bridge, oh, the paperwork, and that's not us giving you waivers, you're dealing with an altogether different group up higher than us, and it can get very costly.
Very familiar with that.
Yeah. So, okay.
Food concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you have the minutes from last month, are there any additional questions to the August 29th, supervisory meeting minutes? Now I make a motion that we accept them as they are.
I'll second it.
The second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, you got a list of the bills, totaling $73,970.90.
Make a motion to approve this.
Okay, second, you have the motion to approve, $73,970.90, that was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, we got your reports, the roadmaster's report. You finally got some work done?
Yes, I am, well, everything's finally done, all the oil and chip, micro-surfacing, and developing roads. The only thing that's left yet is the linewriters have to come back and paint the lines on the roads at oil and chip, which, they knew that from the get-go, so, I would imagine they'll be back here probably toward the end of this month, look at those.
When do they sweep up the loose stones? Or don't they?
Well, it's described in the contract, you know, contract to sweep up excess stones, but whose description is, who describes the excess stones, no?
Well, it seems like at the ends of the roads is where it's the worst.
Which we will try to do some sweeping up on our own, you know, I didn't, I didn't feel there was an extreme amount of loose stones.
Overall, yeah, overall it wasn't bad, it's just that the ends, like we pulled in the 625 from Bull Hill Road, it's like, there's enough stones there that you can just spin.
I did notice that the other day, I saw it a lot down, I don't know if we washed down from up above, or what.
Well, do they sweep before they line paint? Will they at least sweep the center?
We sweep.
Oh, you sweep the center before they line paint?
Yeah, we will sweep.
How did it work out at the campground, Red Run Campground? He called me concerned that you were going to do it on a Friday afternoon when all the campers were coming in.
As far as, as far as I know, it worked out fine, I didn't hear no complaints from them, so, I don't, like I said, the road, I mean, they had it closed, but traffic could still get through, I mean, I, they were literally probably down at his end for 45 minutes, and that was all the inconvenience that he had, so.
Now, you mentioned you had an offer from P P and L for repairing Oakland Drive, you want to expand on that a little bit?
Yes, um, well, back in April, May, Art and I met with P P and L to discuss damages that were done to mainly Oakland Drive, from Fuller Hill Road to East Maple Grove Road. And we had discussed an amount with them, and, and they said they would get back with us, they came back, said they wanted an official estimate. I then got an estimate from a contractor, Senator Keith P and L, and they came back, just today, I got an email saying that they were willing to give us 70,000 toward the damages to Oakland Drive, which is a, a pretty good chunk of change, should, should do, reach fairly far for the face repair that needs done on that road. I feel that it's a good amount, it's actually more than originally first asked, until after the official estimate was put into place, so, I just wanted to, yeah, I got a pet.
Yeah, well, Art, what do you think, 70,000?
Whatever. Even though they're, this is an important facility for them, there's no question about it.
But how much leverage do we have anyways?
Well, they could fight us and see, they didn't do that much damage, too.
Yeah.
And that question was brought up in my discussions with them, they asked for records of when the last time something was done at Oakland Drive, and I didn't, I never gave them anything, because I-
Yeah, yeah.
But, and I don't want.
Well, if there's no objections here, I suggest we authorize Andy to make, and accept that offer from-
I agree with that.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make it as a motion that we authorize roadmaster to accept seventy thousand. And the second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Very good, Andy.
Root, root issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Think Levi has little knowledge of this, I'm not sure. Five thirty-eight West Maple Grove Road. Name is Sprecker. Front porch. Okay, I get call every month. He claims our snow removal program has ruined that, is that called after?
Astro.
Astro. Astro turf on where?
On the front porch.
And where's, what's the address?
Five thirty-eight. Now, he claims that they put the salt, and I got blamed for the same thing when I was roadmaster, but not Andy's fault. They put salt on the road and they come along, they plow it, and it pushes the salt with the snow up against, there's a railing there, or drilling, and drops, and deteriorates this turf stuff.
It's also what, two or three, four, five, seven, wall, too?
Yeah, I know. Got to get it up over the wall or do something. Uh...
Just make a comment that you take after turf, just put it outside, and that's it there. Come back a year later, this one will be deteriorated. Other, with nothing thrown on it.
I think it's a wooden porch, too.
Wooden, yeah.
Yeah.
And he's, he's been there. He's came to me and said that there's been piles of salt in this porch. I asked him, next time that happens, to call me out and show me, but I had not seen that.
I get a phone call every month, every year. I told him, all he wants is a strip cut under the railing, and that strip replaced. Now, that wouldn't cost much, but the idea of doing it, so-
Sort of what?
A strip of after turf or whatever it is.
Oh, it is. He wants his porch, a strip cut off his porch.
He wants us to replace it.
He's replaced.
And us to replace it.
After turf.
Now, the only thing I'm gonna ask is, month after month, I get a talk with him. The address is five thirty-eight Mid, West Maple Grove.
That's it, right, yeah.
I would appreciate, and I hate to do this, if, boy, I'm only one supervisor, I can't make decisions on that. Yep, it's right there, just a strip right along the front, right here.
But it's ten foot off the road.
Well, he wants-
Wow.
He wants a reply. Now, I would, I would appreciate if Mel, and you, Eric, would stop, talk to him, look at him, give you a recommendation to, I don't know which one you, maybe, I don't know if the zoning officer could write something up, that from the board supervisors, the response was, or what route we take.
Well, it wouldn't be a zoning officer issue, it's not a zoning ordinance question. It's more of a township getting off the top there, Levi.
Yeah. He enjoyed that.
It, it's, it's a township general road maintenance issue.
Well, it's a state route.
Oh, is it?
Yes, state route. But we plow it.
We plow it.
No, we plow it.
Yeah, well.
Uh, he mentioned today, called today again, that he has talked to his lawyer, and he really doesn't want to get the lawyer involved in this, you know, you know, fight with the township, so, even if the board decides no, a response to him in writing from somebody, that would mean all the three board members.
I think it would be, you know, a letter on township letterhead signed by chairman and board supervisors after the three of you make the decision.
And I guess we could give our opinions to the secretary, and she could relay it to, what's his name? Lamar Sprecher.
Well, I'm, I'm agreed to go talk to him. Do you?
Do you what?
To go talk.
He's a nice man.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I think the word required was that we vote, decision based upon the public's view.
Okay.
Okay, if they would just agree to meet with him before the next meeting, he knows then that we've addressed it.
Okay.
That's-
Are we going to repair?
That's the decision that would have to be made after the response from the three supervisors. I, to be truthful with you, I, I don't see it's a township responsibility, but he is determined somebody's gonna fix his porch because of the salt that has been placed on it.
The question is, do we use taxpayers' money to fix his porch, and it may or may not be a result of our road crew plowing, clearing a state road?
Does the snow actually go up on porch?
I don't know.
I don't foresee that it does. He's claimed that is when there's been buses and this and that. I told him, hey, take pictures of it, call me out, show me this before you clean it up. And since that, I've never knocked it from. Now, obviously, he's been calling other people.
I don't see how we can even-
Not just me.
Yeah, I don't see how we can even-
But he threatened, he threatened lawyer with me, and I said, well, good luck.
Well, see, I'm not so sure it's salt related at this point, because the way the thing sits, and according to the sun, and the banister shades the rest of it, is it sun-related across the front, too, over time? So I'm not sure it's salt.
Yeah, it's the side that's facing the surface of the road, or political road.
Yeah, that's what's at the end.
Well, the argument I have is, we're coming up to a stop sign, and the trucks are starting to slow up by the time they're at the south. They're not doing that fast in the first place. You know, it's-
It'd be very difficult for a lawyer to prove what's causing the problem, if there is a problem. And I don't, I can't imagine, there's a whole lot of money to be expended on a small strip of after turf, that he would hire a lawyer at whatever, dollars an hour, to have that accomplished.
Well, I would just like to have something done that he doesn't pay every month.
Well, there's a problem with going out and taking the hook, and, yeah.
So, okay.
Three.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, the engineer's report?
Yes, uh, you have a copy of my report of September eight. Um, I have a number of items on page four, and I'll just summarize those for the board. Uh, item one is George Lee's stormwater management. Uh, we see the memorandum of understanding. Item two is the Marvin Morse Stormwater Project. Uh, that's a memorandum of understanding and a stormwater management agreement. Item number three is the gambling capital-wise land development. Uh, we issued a financial security recommendation, an amount of seven thousand, forty dollars and seventy cents for that land development lease. Item number four is the John R. Zimmerman Land Development. This is the one on Running Road that we just acted on, uh, earlier. We received a stormwater management agreement. We've also received a land development agreement, which is not noted in my report. Um, and we also issued a financial security recommendation letter, uh, to establish that amount in the amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Item number five is the Andrea Holder Stormwater Management Project, recommending a release of three hundred and seventy-five dollars for that project. Six is the David Rubaker Stormwater Management Project, issuing a release recommendation amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Item seven is the John R. Zimmerman Stormwater Project, issuing financial security release in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And item number eight, uh, that is not added on this, uh, will be the Robert Homan III Stormwater Management Project. We received his memorandum of understanding for that project.
There's Robert Homan, what was it?
Robert Homan III.
Yeah, his, uh-
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Yeah, memorandum of understanding.
And that was item one great.
Yeah.
Are there any questions, uh, concerns about approving all in one motion? Now, I'll make a motion that we approve the required action as requested by our township engineer, all eight items as each listed. Okay, motion was second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, next you have some of the, um, permit reports. We have your SEO, zoning officer. We have a report from, uh, our zoning officer, and I have two items that I need to bring up, because I've been getting phone calls. Number one is chickens at Sunoco Gas Station. For three years, I've been told, there's been complaints that the chickens have been digging up flower beds. Actually, the roosters have been chasing pedestrians walking along the road, and I've been told that we have done nothing, absolutely nothing. And I promised him we would discuss it tonight and propose actions so that it can be resolved. Levi has sent letters on May fifteenth this year, May sixteenth last year, and I think the previous zoning officer had sent some letters also, and nothing gets done, and the resident next to there are just fed up. Uh, Levi posted, uh, a notice of violation on Thursday of last week, giving them twenty-four hours to remedy the problem, and I was texting a picture on Saturday, Sunday, and this morning of chickens walking around loosely.
I observed some this afternoon at five o'clock.
Okay, I, it's, it's, it has, we have to take action. This is just, this is just that no one, nothing, nothing is being done. Um, at one point, he, the, the, the owner at the Sunoco claimed they're not his chickens, so the, the neighbors had someone come try to catch them, and he ran them off the property and said they're trespassing. He would arrest them for trespassing when they were trying to pick up the chickens. So, he, he claims they're not his, but yet he feeds them and provides shelter for them, but does not, um, confine them as required. I would like to take action, that we, um, file a civil complaint against them, their failure to keep the animals confined, um, even if they've just been feeding them, confined the animals that they've been feeding and sheltering. They're not necessarily require ownership, um, just that they've been feeding and sheltering, and so they're responsible for, for keeping them under control. And, like I say, that notice went in effect as of, would have been Friday, twenty-four hours, the twenty-four hours would have been in effect Friday at three o'clock.
Well, yeah, the one property was, uh, hand, was handed up to Sunoco around eight twenty, Thursday morning, and then-
Twenty and three o'clock in the afternoon, approximately, yeah, or four o'clock.
Yeah.
So, by the end of day Friday, twenty-four hours were up. So you got Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday already. You got four consecutive days that they've been not, um, conforming to our township ordinance, which is, requires them to keep them under control, that they do not be a nuisance and destroy property to the neighbors, and also be a nuisance and hostile when people walk in past. I've been told that a rooster chased a woman walking past. She ran, the rooster just went right after her. And this is three years worth. This, this is where they, there've been enough complaints that it's time to, um, I think we've done everything we can. I don't know what else we could do, besides put some leverage on correcting the remedy.
Who's chickens actually, are they?
He watched him talking to mom, so I don't know if that one.
Can you state your name?
It's true.
Will you state your name?
I'm seriously.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a joke. My dad got her chickens for Mother's Day. Two hens, one turned, Henry had to turn out to be Henry. And he is vicious, he likes attacking everybody, and she doesn't have a place for chickens. They've been living in a garage. So those people said, everybody just brings their chickens here, so.
Which property is that you're talking about?
The Sunoco.
The Sunoco.
So-
Because there's two properties here.
She just dumped the rooster with the other eleven roosters. There's three hens and like twelve roosters. So maybe you can like ask them to get like fourteen more girls. I mean, the boys just-
We, yeah, yeah, we had, we had Levi post both properties, because it's right next to the, the old mill property. Maybe wrong fault, though, it was, uh, what, uh, my. At one point, it seemed like the Sunoco was saying, it's their chickens, and they say it's not their chickens, and it got to the point, well, at some point, someone has to determine whose chickens are, but they got a, the temple was made to catch them by one of the neighbors, and they were restricted, denied catching them, and, uh, so that's why they were first.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, then, I have, I have a voicemail that says there were at least twenty chickens in the Mr. and Mrs. Sal backyard.
So we can let the fire come in, and there's like chickens in there, like, harvest these chickens and put them.
Well, that's, that's, that's the question I ask. I, I've wondered if our animal, if our animal control officer would go catch chickens, and he won't.
If they want me to go over there and trap them chickens on a property, I'm allowed on.
Pete Martin. I asked him to go catch them.
Well, here's the question I have is, who is feeding them and providing their shelter on the Sunoco property? Who are we going to be filing some kind of legal action against?
There's a man just right down in the building, and there's food and water in them. But I, I would imagine, it's on their property.
It's the tenant.
But we don't know anything other than the illegal title holder, which is, you know.
But he's not doing it, because he knows who the line must be.
Yeah, but so who's the individual?
It's rented, it's rented.
We need, we need a name of the individual, yeah.
Well, the neighbors tell me that the owner is in Pakistan. He's a Pakistani, and he's living in Pakistan. That's what I was told.
We, if we're gonna file something in a district justice office, we're gonna need a name, a party.
Well, who, did you, did you get any signature of the manager at the Sunoco?
Well, that's not to say we, you know, there's the other property, too, that apparently the same, maybe not as bad, but-
Well, I, I thought we would cite both, and they can figure out whose chickens they are. They can, they can talk to Rodney Hartman, and he can figure out whose chickens they, whose chickens they are.
But you need a name.
Can we, can we, can we do the property owner, then?
Well, we can try that. I mean, they, they can come in with a defense that they're not aware of it. If it's a lease, which is probably what's happened.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The, the owner leases it, and, um, the lease may cover, you know, this, uh, it might be a violation of the lease, that the tenant's doing this.
It's, it's owned by Gable Properties. Where are they out of?
Well, I'm missing.
Is, is it, do they have a phone number that they can be called?
I am not. I'm sure, I'm sure they are.
Yeah, I was suggesting we try to get for half of the property, since we didn't get any response from Levi's, uh, notice and claim holders. See if you can find out from them who the tenant is, and, um, explain the situation, and that the township needs to take some kind of action. And we need to get a name of the tenant.
Okay. We keep just stumbling, because we can't find out who owns the chickens, and then when they try to get, catch them, they're, then their details, you don't care if they get the property owner's, shoot them if they come on their property, and so I've been told that they're gonna shoot them and put up cars on my porch. Well, we'll get you a name. Can you proceed with the civil action if you have a name?
Yes, I can start with how we have together, and then we'll be with, yeah.
Is that the, is that our, this board?
Who's the other one that they go over to town? Mr. Jarrett.
Jarrett, farmhouse, the old farmhouse, back behind them.
Next to the Sunoco, they-
Yeah.
What's his, what's his, the father?
Their chickens are both properties. We don't know whose chickens are, we're covering our bases. They may be half theirs and half the Sunoco's, I don't- They may be half theirs and half the Sunoco's, I don't know.
Because I'm understanding Levi, neither of those properties, the chickens are not confined. They are running loose on both properties.
Jarrett also feeds the chickens.
Well, that's where this civil, civil violation has to be that they are feeding and sheltering uncontrolled, unconfined animals.
There's no question that there's a valid reason to do it, is you need when you go to court, a party to sue.
I, yeah, I had a voicemail that said that he spent half, he had the day putting the moles back in his flower bed. At one point, he had over 20 chickens in his backyard.
Now, Levi posted it, he posted the property, so the tenant, whoever is running the Sunoco is aware of it. But that only gets you so far. So I'm hoping that somebody would step up to play.
The people who don't like the chickens, they can get rid of them if they're on their property.
I don't know about that. He, he said if he had a letter from the township saying that he could shoot them and that letter be given to, that letter be given to Sunoco and they knew it, then that's what he wanted. Otherwise, he wants the township to deal with it. And he'd eat it. For three years, he's been in trouble with this.
No, we can get another, allowing you to shoot chickens. You have to deal with it in a humane fashion.
Well, let's try to.
Maybe, you know, some other governmental entity or a private organization who's not, say, we're not humanely dealing with these chickens. So I think the civil action is a good way to try to handle it.
On the property where they don't like the chickens, why can't they catch them? You have a right to protect your own property regardless what type of animal is.
I'll let them decide what they want to do. You know, he was a township, you know, we enforce your ordinances in trying to deal with this situation.
I don't think they'd want to order it. I feel like, I think that they have tried to get, they, they feel it's not their problem to deal with the chickens. They shouldn't be there.
They, yes, they've been there when Gwen Haller went and told the owner to get rid of their.
They were there when Tom Schultz was.
Yes, yes, it's just he's had.
They don't like the chickens, but they're upset that they come on their property.
Yes.
The chickens stayed off their property, they'd be fine.
But they spent a lot of money on moles and stuff and they keep digging up their.
They could put a defense.
Well, yeah, now we need, we need to resolve it.
Well, I had problems with the fish pond for an house. Neighbor's duck kept going and eating the fish. I settled the problem.
Don't tell us, don't tell us anymore. We're being recorded.
I, I have a state pest control license. I can trap here. And I have, and my paperwork is very much, any animal from any place that is causing damage to your property, you have rights to do something and remove that animal.
Well, yeah.
You have rights, yeah.
If it's.
No, 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 no. I'm talking.
Yeah, well, we, we don't, no one, no one here seems to want to go catch them for him. I say let's get a name for, and let Bill proceed with a civil violation as of Saturday morning of last year, or last, last week. What?
I can't use the last year.
Well, no, I corrected myself. Is that, can I make that as a motion?
Make that as a motion.
Right, we're going to get a name and.
Yeah. Okay, I motioned to get a name and let Bill proceed with legal, I mean, a civil violation.
Are we talking about both?
The property, yes, yes. And is there a second? It's second, those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, my other item, which I've been getting complaints about, this is in 176 Fairview Drive. There's been a camper parked in the front area of the house and neighbors have been complaining out for six months about it. We promised our zoning officer he would move it, but it hasn't been moved. Now, the last time you gave him a notice of violation, or where we at?
Yeah, it was.
I'm not sure what it was, June or May.
Well, March, there was a letter in March, February, February, and then March.
The last, last letter I sent to him was in June.
So there was three letters.
Because he had promised that by May 31st, he would have to move. And so I would, I would, uh, copy it.
Well, I think we need to get serious on this one, but you could give him a little bit of time, yet like 30 days and then he'd proceed with a civil violation.
It's not removed by the next township moving. Meeting will move forward.
I think he just needs the urged.
Well, I'll let it know consequences.
Of course, the, the guy that's complaining, he's been complaining also for six months now.
Yeah.
Okay. You okay with that? Okay, we don't need a motion on that?
No.
Back to our zoning officer, he has some estimates in your packet for some work done to the, I might jump ahead here.
Yeah, I can text him. Park and Rec.
Well, but that's Levi. Well, let's, let's. Do you have anything with the solicitor?
No, it was in the, I sent you the letter regarding the zoning letter was appealed as a progress to the end of the month.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the reports that we just discussed? Roadmaster engineer, SEO zoning and solicitor.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Okay, second, you have a motion to approve your report. There was a second, those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now, you have your park and rec, mission meeting. I guess we got the park looking a little better with the extra park time help this summer.
Yeah, I really appreciate Andy's work with the park and rec going on.
We used to have a park liaison that used to come here and report.
Right.
I don't know what happened.
Is Debbie Cavalli at 11?
I, I talked to Gary Messner at the picnic and he's been so busy mowing lawns this year that a lot of stuff isn't getting done. Is there any way we can help, help get that moving?
Do I use the guy?
Well, I know Levi can do a good job working with some of the park properties. Is it possible we would forward, appoint him as a liaison, liaison?
Levi.
For the rest of the year to, to.
Who, who are we talking about, Levi Hoover?
Levi Hoover.
He's already doing it.
I didn't know if we were talking about Levi Lineback.
No, I think, I think he's, he's having some time to get involved there and I think he might help get, get some things taken care of. And possibly on gallons of straw and I'd have to ask if he's willing to do that. Go to their meetings and kind of represent the board to the end of the year and then they can appoint either their own next year or else we.
Go to the 841.
We continue to let him represent the board at the park and rec. The park and rec is an unutilized part of our township that I think is, it's more than a one man. And I think Gary has been in control and doing as good as he could, but this, this summer just exposed him to just too much workload that he couldn't do much. I know Andy's been trying to help out and I think that, I'm thinking, what do you, what do you guys thought thinking?
If I make, make.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if it's the board's decision to approve it or something like that. I would, I would be interested mostly in being involved in sort of planning and empowering the board and actually informing them of what some of their entities could be devoted to. You know, there's, there's numerous things that could happen there and have happened in the past and aren't anymore. But I think a lot of the board hasn't really been informed or educated as to what their realm of responsibility could include. So liaison would work, I see that as working in two ways. Appearing from the board, some of their vision falling out of the park would get used and I would, you know, do my best to convey that. And like I said, empower that as well.
You've got a great idea.
Well, I'm thinking it would be just a temporary thing to the end of the year and then decide whether the park and rec appoints their own from within and comes to our meetings or we take, continue to have a board appointed on. What do you think?
My support.
Is there seven of them? They're fairly new and. I almost speak up.
There's, there's a full board right now.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Well, how can you have a, too many? How can you have too many? Um.
Yeah.
There we go.
I think that's what I do, just Levi involved in this.
Yeah, I saw the user.
Is it, is it limited to how many we have on that?
Yes, it's an ordinance.
Okay, okay.
That doesn't mean that the person that's willing to get involved is.
Oh, absolutely.
Subcommittee. They could develop some subcommittee.
I know how to get a hold of her.
I'm sure you do.
Well, if there's no objections, it's all, you want to say something?
No, I agree, Levi could get them more on board.
Okay.
From the very conception start of the park. We had a park and rec committee and Levi was very much in the park instrumental program. We had a park and rec committee that, they had all kinds of ideas. I mean, if you went back to the original concept and what was brought to the people, they had so many ideas and now you don't hear nothing.
Well, that's good reading. I came across that recently and read them.
It's about that thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
30 pages, more than that. But no, there was ideas that were good, but it was a matter of time and money at the time. And Levi is very much knowledgeable on a lot of that which took place. And all he'd have to do is look at the park and rec plan and it would refresh his memory real quick.
He already did.
They did.
Well, are you willing to do that, Mr. Hoover? Attend their meetings and represent the board? Well, then I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the board would appoint Levi Hoover as a liaison to the park and rec, between the board and the park and rec, to provide the board closer contact and give feedback to the park and rec that for a better movement communication.
Can I say something? I think we need more than communication of Levi. I think we need him to give them a sense of direction.
All I, all I see in, in this is they're repairing things.
In other words, yeah, there, there's no forward thinking actually.
That's exactly my concept.
Okay, and the motion was till the end of the year? And it was second?
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, you have three estimates for heating, air conditioning at the farmhouse.
First? Oh, right there you have it open. That's the.
Basketball.
Basketball, and this is resurfacing.
This is the one we approved?
Well, yeah, we have to approve it.
Oh, okay, okay.
The first three pages are the actual quotes that Andy received for the resurfacing of the tennis and basketball courts at Villas-Valle. And the front one, Brenneman Company is the road letter on that.
So we just have to make, make this the motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the, redoing the tennis court and the, and the basketball court. And award it to Brenneman based upon their proposal dated June 16th, 2017 for $12,600.
Second.
The motion is made, second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do you have anything to do with the partitions or no?
No, we can talk about that. There, um, there were some prices to put partitions in the men's room up by the, which field is that?
Stripper.
Stripper for $1,900. I challenged them to just get some pricing on the metal ones to replace what was there. And that's about half the price. Now, we've been replacing, when I say we, they've been replacing some with the phenolic, the solid phenolic, which obviously wears a lot better. And so they're looking for a direction to replace just that men's room.
Right, just the men's room is pretty bad shape.
With, they, the board, the park and rec board had recommended with the solid phenolic partitions for about $1,900. What do you guys think?
Is that from Calder's door?
No. Was it Calder or was it overhead door? Calder, it was Calder.
It was Calder.
Yeah, it was. $17.95.
Yeah. But now that's not, that didn't include tax, so that's just.
Yeah, they don't pay tax.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay. My first concern was that's a lot of money for just this one stall and a urinal screen.
Three years, right?
Yeah. But I'm not the one cleaning it and maintaining it every year. So if it was my money, I probably would buy the cheap one. But it's not, it's, it's all of our money. The metal, the metal ones are structurally stronger and they'll last as long as you keep them clean, but they will rust out in the urinal areas. And maybe, I walked in there and, you know, the solid phenolic is kind of a very nice, expensive partition. And the rest of the bathroom is unpainted plywood ceiling and a concrete floor and, but maybe that's a start. Maybe, uh, so I, I, I don't care. But I think we'll, we'll continue to set the direction. If we decide that there's bathrooms that could just use the metal, then we could save money. But if we want to, you know, go to solid phenolic, it'd make twice as much. But then, who knows, they'll last, they'll, they'll last in the junkyard, I mean, in the dump forever too. What's your thoughts?
Well, that's the thing, how long is the life? Well, that's the thing, how long is the life expectancy supposed to be of each, then to repair it? Because the park's been there now twenty years? So.
You could get twenty years out of metal, but you'll get forty years out of the solid phenolic.
So, which do you prefer to go, the long term, or?
Well, my, my initial concern was they would get damaged by vandalism or busted up quicker than wearing out. So if, if you're gonna replace it because it's that quicker up, then it'd be easier to replace the less expensive one.
Don't matter me, which way we go.
What do you think?
I think we should go with the recommendation of the health.
Well, I'm not sure the, the board considered the metal, did they? Their recommendation was based upon just having a proposal for the, the matching system.
The, the phenolic ones, the, there were good partitions that, the Redman's roof they were replaced, the Beagle's mask they didn't replace, and they were all phenolic. That's what they went with. I think the Beaver Lodge is something similar, but I don't think it's actually phenolic. I think it's another material from what I was told. Um, but they, they did not consider metal. They were told that phenolic wasn't the way to go, and that's what they wanted. That's what the park board was told, that's what I was told, so I gave them all estimates for phenolic. And I was told there was some discussion on why phenolic instead of metal, and, you know, well, mumbling and juggling and, and as well, that's the discussion, and so.
Question. Yeah.
Does the money for this come out of the park right now?
Yes.
It will come out of their pocket, so then.
Well, look, how about, how about, let's go back and, if you want to authorize the phenolic, but just make sure they understand the price of the metal.
What is the question?
Half of it.
About eleven hundred.
Well, they want, we just let them look at it again, well?
Yeah.
Send it back to them, let them look at it again. I, I agree, if whatever's happening, I should have built a metal.
So, do we wanna just authorize optology, or we go to that?
You're, you're, you're an understanding. Even this, this whole girl, who?
Okay, okay. It's not going anywhere, right?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, okay.
You or someone will convey to them that they should consider other optologists, not just like their shore, that's.
If, and, and I'm sure Carol can attest, there's, you go to campgrounds, there's some great campgrounds that have the best partitions, and some have metal. Because, and the reason some are metal, because they're cheaper, you know, but if the metal are cleaned every, every year, and you could either put a piece of laminate on the urinal screens, and they would last thirty years, too, but it's, it's a little more maintenance.
I, I haven't been here for, I've only been at the township for ten years, and it's hard to prove they were park, I haven't been in it much until I started working here. Uh, I was told that the metal ones started rusting within ten years of being put in. And that's why.
Well, they can be painted. Again, it's how much money you wanna sink into the bathrooms that are used, you know, a couple of months out of the year.
Unless you wanna sink it in upfront, it sounds like the maintenance loss will eventually catch up.
Okay. Let, have them reconsider, I mean, have them really know that. Yeah. Okay, we have, um, yeah, three proposals, and Levi identified which is the best value. Uh, system from metallic to plumbing and heating. So, um, I think he's looking for some act, the authorization to, um, ask the board to, you know, track to metallic plumbing.
Levi, you took these quotes?
Yes.
And you're satisfied with the metallic quote, uh, quote is good?
Yeah.
I mean, that's good system, everything?
Yeah. And, and in fact, um, the systems are almost identical across the, not quite, but, uh, the, I told them that they could propose, uh, propose to hold them equal. And I did a lot of research, that something came in different. If you remember back, uh, earlier in the year, we had gotten Jeff Good to give us specifications, we paid him to do that. He knew that with those specifications, um, there was the, that we were gonna distribute those, this, uh, specifications so that, I wanted to do everything I could to get equal, uh, or pricing for equal product.
Yeah.
And I think we did, uh, like I said, most of the equipment is exactly the same, and, um, you know, so I'm not even sure why the, the difference in pricing, but.
I mean, there's substantial difference in price.
Yeah.
Well, not too bad, but you know, it's, it's labor. It's, it's labor, it's, you know.
But, um, yeah, I've had, personally had, uh, metallic plumbing, heating, probably has assistance for me, I was most, most satisfied.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, that we accept the metallic plumbing and heating estimate at eighteen thousand, eighteen dollars.
You said eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen. So, what do you?
Do you look at Levi's, she go?
Oh, okay, well, if that's, if that's the correct amount, that's fine.
Go right back one.
Well, yeah. This one says eighteen two. Yeah.
But it's a credit.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Several. Oh, oh.
Okay.
You save all that money.
Okay, okay.
I think the sense will return with you on.
Okay. Um, we had a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. What's the progress of the group up to?
Uh, I think we did last week, we, we, and said that, oh, next, next week is a touch on the schedule. But the tour's in schedules from others, I'm still there.
Yeah.
But, so.
And the chimneys have been reappointed, and, um, so they're making progress.
Who reappointed the chimneys?
Um.
Michael Ringer.
Yeah.
Oh.
Peter Lupe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that you?
Yeah. Well, for me.
Not anymore. Okay, is that it? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, we have our whole business.
There's only in your packet, Mike.
Right, no, all, all it is, is that we've gone through the public, uh, commentary that ended on August thirty first. Uh, I don't believe we received any written comments from the public outside of what the meeting that we had last month. So if the board is so inclined, we just would like authorization to move forward and submit that to the DEP. Deadline is on Saturday, uh, sixteenth, so we can move forward with submitting an application to DEP for their review.
I make a motion that we move forward, and our application.
My second.
Okay, the motion was made, second to continue, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Carol.
What do you want?
Second.